That's the antenna.
Okay, that's the antenna.
You're not supposed to tell them that. It should be threatened by the camera.
Failing the term coming between today, session today and hearing this.
Okay, I am reporting on financials that I approved on September 30th, Resolution 15-140, for the authorization, folks gave me back on December 30th of last year. Last Thursday, we did an appropriation transfer of contingency into other $25,000. This related to the potential purchase of land, which ultimately we did not do, but we had to have the money in place, so that was the one action I took. The other action I took was to approve an encumbrance for community development for a travel in the amount of $1,075.
Sheriff's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of September 29th, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
Sheriff Clippell?
I.
The county has switched today and approved an appropriation transfer from the contingency account to return appropriations to the sheriff's office for reimbursed flood checks expenses that were deposited into the general fund, cash transfers out of the general fund for portions of 2015 funding for the county home, the Office of Community and Economic Development, and the CASA Fund, contract for Shep Electric for the Office of Community and Economic Development revolving loan for the purchase of a random building in the amount of $225,000, travel request for the auditor's office, payment to Johnson Controls for the McFarland Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Project with the Department of Water Resources in the amount of $345,494, and a payment to Jaws Mechanical for a boiler replacement at the county home in the amount of $24,950.
I'll make that motion.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
Sheriff Clippell?
Morning.
Jessica, do I understand correctly that you're an officer?
I, yes.
I, a yes? There was a hesitation there.
I have, yeah, one of my, you know, I have a background in performance.
Yeah, there's a mic there. Right there. And I know there was, somebody was allotting your balance.
Could you sing?
Sing your presentation.
Could you sing your emotion?
Oh, no, no. Oh, no. Yeah, I have my under, I have six years of college in music school, so, yeah. Okay, more interesting though.
Sorry for embarrassing you.
No, that's okay. We have finally found a maintenance coordinator, Edward Shortridge, he's currently at a nursing home in Lake County, and, um...
Working at a nursing home.
Correct, yeah, correct. Yeah, he's currently the maintenance director at a nursing home, and he's kind of a one-man gig, and he's used to not only identifying issues, but also correcting them also. Actually, Glenn Burnick helped me out with the interview process to ask some more technical questions, and this gentleman passed with flying colors, so, he'll be a great addition to our team. He's looking to start the at 19th.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve hiring Edward Shortridge to position a full-time maintenance coordinator number 1013 to be effective October 19th, 2015, at a rate of $16.94 per hour. After the successful completion of a 180-day probationary period, the rate will increase to $17.83 per hour.
I'll make that motion.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
Sheriff Clippell?
Thank you.
Happy day.
My goodness. Or if the D.D., I thought it needed to be asked. I'm sorry.
Out of all the stuff, Steve did surprise.
Asking those questions of those of you at home may want to ask if you were here.
I'm sorry.
I apologize, let's move forward. Anybody on board with D.D. here?
No, I do not see Steve or Dan.
Do you want to do that, Dave, or do we just need to...
This is, well, I mean, it's kind of self-explanatory, apparently there is a slight increase, 3752, 35, for the adult services building entrance, so, the board has to approve any change in the contract.
The Board of Adult and Disabilities is requesting the board approve and execute change order number one, increasing the contract with Millstone Management Group Incorporated for the Metamask Center Adult Services Building Entrance and Exterior Remodel Project in the amount of $3,752.35.
I'll make that motion.
Sheriff Rea?
I'm staying.
Sheriff Spillay?
Aye.
Sheriff Chekel?
Aye.
Oh, double trouble here.
Oh, tag team.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, the first item is just a status report, housekeeping for the state, just to let them know where we are, with how much money we spend, how far along we are on the projects, for the allocation, right?
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Community Development Block Grant Program Status Report, incorporate BS 14181 for the period September 1st, 2014 through September 29th, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
Sheriff Spillay?
Aye.
And I want to make a point, I was meeting with Anita and her staff last week, and a few other departments, and the topic of reports and stuff that come through the session, which are kind of administrative in nature, that's not really a decision that we need to make, this, I'm assuming this is the type of thing where, this is the type of thing we're talking about, we might want to visit at some point in time whether or not we just find a different process to handle these, but it consumes a lot of time in these meetings, and it's administrative in nature, there's no decision to make, if we were to sign off on something, we might want to talk about change, and I've asked Dave and Christie to put together a list of things that they think might fall in my category, maybe we can visit that as an action at some point in time, and change our meeting.
We're putting together those two samples that...
I get a thumbs up from Karen back there, too, this week. So, it'd be nice to, you know, focus on those things that we really need to focus on, decisions we need to make, that kind of stuff.
My role has been made over the years about some of these contracts, so...
Some of this stuff is just stupid, we're just spending a lot of time on stuff we don't need to spend, we need to focus on more important things.
Thank you for consideration, that's great. This one is the final stages of the Shep Electric loan, this is coming out of funds that's repayment of other loans, so it's basically benefit of our good-paying businesses, we are possible to continue to make loans to other businesses. So, this is for Shep Electric to have a new home, an actual home of their own, they've been leasing up until this point, so they'll purchase the land and build 70,000 square foot headquarters, and in a location that's well-chosen to serve their clientele, so they'll go right by Maple Road Drive in there, in a nice commercial area, and continue their good work there, they're a nice profitable little business, so we expect big things, and good members of the community, and nice people.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute the legal binding documents for the revolving mortgage on loan to Shep Electric Company Incorporated for the construction of a building at 12069 Maple Village, Monson Township in the amount of $225,000 for 15 years, 180 months at three and a half percent interest, including participation agreement, mortgage, and so, no guarantee, Shep Electric Company Incorporated.
I'll make that motion.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
I see we need to focus on a simple banking contract, so we...
Never. That's Laura.
This one is easy compared to one that's coming later in the month. From maintenance.
All right.
Steve is...
Yeah, I know, I already told him, it's done. We got to be quick, so, I'm just saying.
All right. So, the next one?
This is under the infrastructure program, which is the program that we formerly had in place to allow for low-income installation of septic and wells, and this is another repayment under that program, so we're asking you to sign off on the cancellation of mortgage.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute a satisfaction of mortgage for the Millie and Nicole Rabel under a revolving loan infrastructure program for property located at 13404 Chitticothay Road, which has a mortgage in the amount of $790.35.
I'll make that motion.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Got your message, I take it, no, it's not ready to do this, is everything okay?
Yeah, yeah, my mother-in-law's in the nursing room, I didn't take it out, she's fine. I thought that there would be trumpets for something when I came up here, what? We're actually hiring people, this is a big moment. Yeah, we're halfway there.
You love to trumpet at home.
You know, you guys have no idea how happy this makes me, I've worked every other weekend all summer, and I'm still, we're still not out of the woods yet, but this is, we're halfway there now, there's, this is, the first one is a full-time position for third shift, and the second is part.
I thought unemployment is, is that a record? So, you would think it would be knocking the doors down and getting...
Now that we, you guys, thank you, changed the wage scale, it made a difference, I actually had several applicants for these positions.
And then you said you started advertising in the middle?
Yeah, yeah, we're not advertising in the news here, I'll break this minute, we're advertising in the...
Local.
Middlefield Post, the Maple Leaf, and something else. Goodness, yeah, yeah, so this is great.
Probably good.
I would love to stay on my weekends, yes.
And not have the function of the cook as well.
I'm a cook, though.
It's hard to answer, yeah.
I can cater for you guys if you need to now, and I can do family reunions.
Do you like Kevin? Yeah, the menu's all limited, but...
Yeah.
Family reunions, you have to pledge to take the family when you leave.
Oh, no, I have enough.
The county home is requesting the board approve hiring Robert Coe to the position of full-time attendant number 1504 to be effective October 13th, 2015, at a rate of $10.47 per hour. After the successful completion of the 180-day probationary period, the rate will increase to $11.4 cents per hour. The county home is requesting the board approve hiring Victoria Schuber to the position of part-time attendant number 1504 dash one to be effective October 13th, 2015, at a rate of $10.47 cents per hour. After the successful completion of the 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $11.4 cents per hour.
I'll make those motions.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
Sheriff Spillay?
Aye.
These are both very experienced people.
Yeah, they are, that's what you get when you pay, I'm so happy, thank you very much for the wage change.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You got the biggest chunk on the agenda this one?
Actually, Shane's here to fill out the rest today, except the first one on the list, so, first one here on item 11 is just to approve and execute the change order for our annual pavement marketing project, it's an increase of $4,800, we added a couple roads to the list, and did some work, a couple areas where we cracked a little bit more to cover up, make some more.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute change order number one, final increasing the contract with Arrow Marketing Incorporated for the application of polyester pavement remedies to various roads for the year 2015, in the amount of $4,860.23.
I'll make that motion.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
Sheriff Clippell?
Aye.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Good morning.
Good morning, James.
Good morning.
How are you? Good. I have three jobs to present today, all three are scheduled for Ohio Public Works funding, first is, what are we at here?
1213.
Yeah. Resolution 15142, but Auburn Road, sections A through C in Auburn Township, that road is from the county line up to Washington Street, and...
From Washington Street is Auburn Road.
Auburn Road is a public work part of it, and we're going to repair and then resurface that section from, what was it, from the county line up to Washington Street, probably one of the lowest-ranked roads in our county right now. Want to go through all three of them, or do you want to do them individually?
What is their relationship? They're all the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do all three of them.
Okay, so that's Auburn AC.
So, when you say lowest-ranked, that was just like on that scoring basis, that you have a certain number for road conditions and stuff?
Correct, yeah, and based on the age of the asphalt, the condition of the surface, the amount of repairs that are necessary to hold it together.
I see.
We try to, you know, send our dollars to the areas that are most needing them, so that we can maintain a high-level service throughout the county. The other, one of the other two projects is Quilla Road, Section C, that runs from Butternut to Mayfield Road, it's kind of right in the backyard of the county buildings, that section was recycled and heater-scarified a few years back in an attempt to buy some additional gears out of the surface light, but we have major surface cracking and displacement of the asphalt, and that road is pretty dire need of...
You've been replacing culverts?
Correct, we've been extending and replacing culverts.
We've been, we've been in the last month, two weeks, whatever.
Correct, in preparation for this paving project for next year. And the third project is Mulberry Road, Mulberry Road from State Route 306 all the way to Thwing, actually, County Highway 39 is Mulberry Road, where Mulberry Road ends at Fowler's Mill, the section between Mulberry and Thwing is actually part of the county highway system, so, it's kind of a weird anomaly that the way the county highway system runs from county highway to state routes, or from county highways to the county line, that little piece is part of the county highway 39, and it will be resurfaced as part of that project as well.
I mean, it's almost, it should be part of it, I lived there for twenty-some years.
It makes the connection so that you don't, we maintain that piece of road in order to maintain a level of service with traffic volume that uses it, rather than put that burden on the township, you know, funneling heavier traffic volume onto a lower-service road, and then putting that burden on the township.
Yes.
There's a couple odds and ends around the county like that, where we maintain and manage those roads for now.
I got a call from Munson, last...
This week?
Yeah, this week, no, last week, and they were talking about the use of jake brakes to slow down south of Mayfield on Auburn, and they were concerned about the noise consuming car rires, slowing down the big trucks, is there an impact on the roads using brakes versus the air brakes, you know, to slow those down?
I don't know of any.
I think it's more of a...
No, I think it's more of a nuisance than anything else, but a lot of the municipalities will prohibit the use of them inside the city limits or whatnot, but I don't, I'm not aware of.
They called our office, and I don't know the rules on this, but they said commissioners had to approve putting up a sign on that road, indicating no use of the air brakes there, and I didn't see a problem with it, although somebody mentioned to me that that could be a safety issue, and so, I don't know that much about how those, you know, the braking works relative to the safety line, so I didn't get any comment on that, since it's on Auburn Road or something.
Yeah, that I'm not aware of.
We would get a request from them. All right, good night.
Do you want to do 1213 together, 1415 together, 1617? Okay, this is all of you.
So, these are the first two?
Yep, and this is the last. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-142 to improve Auburn Road CH4, sections A through C in Auburn Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-143, which appoints Board Member Walter Unplayful as the Chief Executive Officer and certifying representative for the proposed Auburn Road CH4, section A through C, project in Auburn Township, and further approve and authorize the Chief Executive Officer to execute the state of Ohio Public Works Commission application for financial assistance.
I mean, yeah, I'm gonna move on that, I'm reading this thing, and I'm not paying attention.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
Sheriff Spillay?
Aye.
Sheriff Clippell?
Yes.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-144 to improve a Quilla Road CH5S, section C in Burton and Clarendon Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-145, which appoints Board Member Walter Unplayful as the Chief Executive Officer and certifying representative for the proposed Quilla Road CH5S, section C, project in Burton and Clarendon Township, and further approve and authorize the Chief Executive Officer to execute the state of Ohio Public Works Commission application for financial assistance.
I'll make the motion, second.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
Sheriff Spillay?
Aye.
Sheriff Clippell?
Aye.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-146 to improve Mulberry Road CH39, sections E through I in Chester and Munson Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-147, which appoints Board Member Walter Unplayful as the Chief Executive Officer and certifying representative for proposed Mulberry Road CH39, section E through I, project in Chester and Munson Township, and further approve and authorize the Chief Executive Officer to execute the state of Ohio Public Works Commission application for financial assistance.
Make the motion, second.
Sheriff Rea?
Aye.
Sheriff Spillay?
Aye.
Sheriff Clippell?
Aye.
Sir?
Thank you.
Ma'am? Good morning. How you doing, bud?
Morning.
Morning.
How are you?
I'm smoking white stuff up there, you're...
You're all right?
It's coming, it's coming.
So, you're trying to make this a reality with all these snow plowing contracts?
Hope we don't have to use them.
Yeah, we have lots of salt.
We sure will have, yeah.
Have you, I know you've got your salt at the maintenance office there, by the county home, but do you also, are you able to utilize some of the salt if you need to from the engineer's office, too?
Yes, about four or five years ago, we got in contact with Joe, where we can go down there, we also got two spreaders from the back of our pickup trucks, within the last four or five years, we started doing specialty salt here, instead of having contracted out, we do fourth in the courthouse, and also, we also have one spreader down at the 47th Sunday, the county home area, where during the day we'll go around and spread, just look if it's needed, you know, that way, it's a whole lot cheaper for us to do it in the...
It's been known to have freezing rain and ice without, without the snow removal, so, you know, there's times when you need the salt, when you don't need to push snow.
Correct. We have quite a good amount of ash to get the black ice, get out there, salt, so, black ice will go around, and you get all salted, so...
I can testify to the fact that Glenn operates in a completely non-biased fashion. I got a warning last week for parking in the wrong spot, and I feel duly chastised, and I will not do that again. I regret that.
He has a guy that's parking for me.
You guys have those little stickers, right?
I just, they're parking warnings, they mean...
Well, I know some places, they make them out of this, a piece of material that you have to get off with a razor knife, and they put them about the size of a sheet of paper and stick them right on the driver, right in front of the driver, and you can't...
And you can't feel them.
No, that's why I see that as great, with a razor blade, I...
Those were used when I first got here, I won't use them, due to liability, if you get in the car, you don't have a razor knife, and you pull out and get in an accident, it can come back where it was my fault, because I put it on your vehicle, and you didn't have the proper tools.
Yeah, no, no, I agree with you, it's dangerous.
I know, but it's effective.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, I'll never do that again.
And where do you guys do that, with the notices, where do you guys, where did he get them on?
He got his down here, he's got his down here.
Same handicap space, or?
I think that was appropriate.
He was parked in a water department space, so, that is useful.
Jerry called him.
No, Jerry, Jerry didn't call.
I say, when he came in and asked me if it was one of our cars, I said, I didn't even realize that was one of our spaces.
Which kind of not meaning you could have had four guys just pick it up and move it. We don't identify the spaces for security.
So, that was him, so, he got in line with everybody else in the county.
I told him next time.
Oh, yeah. All right, just sort of pick it up and move it, because that car's not that big.
We'll put it on top of the dumpster.
Three, four people.
All right, enough harassment, Skip, what's...
Yeah.
It's kind of fun, so...
Number 18 is Home Improvements, was the lowest and best for the Chardon Square, making in at $7,900 a year, push the snow, with our snowplow contracts, I do, for pushing the snow all year, which is the $7,900, then I look back at previous years of what we used for salt, snow removal, and cleanup, so, that usually, depending on the areas, about around $10,000, the salt from there, so, we always put that in there, that does not mean it's going to be used for the Chardon Square, I think we only used approximately $5,000 of it last year, of the $10,000 that we had put aside, so, this one, we're going to keep it to $10,000 on top of the snow plowing, and that will leave us around in case something happens. We just want to do all four of them.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Number 19 is Signature Lawns and Landscaping, this is for our 24-hour area, this consists of county home, transit, TDS, post two, and the dog road, we went ahead and added post two on this this year, usually they do it down there, but we're going to go ahead and keep it up with them, that's why the increase on that one, with that increase, safe, or I'm sorry, the county home is one of our big ones, being that's a 24-hour area, so we need to make sure that that's salted on holidays, and, you know, 11 o'clock is about their shift change, so, make sure they're picking it up and out, and that's why we kept that, we said, we'll do 20,000, we only used $10,000 last year, so... Number 20, that one's 470, that's for Home Improvements, was the lowest investment on that one, that one actually came down by $400, there was a little plate of board on that one, so, M&amp;M used to have it, and it's, TDS got it, now M&amp;M has it back, so, we just left that at $10,000, we didn't use anything last year for salt, and we did it all down. We didn't use anything last year for salt and we did it all down there, so. Uh, 21, same landscaping. About five, six years ago, Sam used to do snow plowing for us. He would come in for the safety center as the lowest investment, as we are aware that this is a 24-hour area. This one is a little bit more due to the safety down there, one inch or more they have to be in there plowing and salt. Stay on that pretty good so that we can use those vehicles down there. With the new guy on hand, the salt price went up a little bit. This is why I jumped it from $10,000 to $15,000 for that one. So we used approximately $7,000 last year in salt and so. And that's why I jumped that one up to $15,000.
The maintenance department is requesting the board award the bid to Eminem Home Improvements LLC for the snow plowing, salt, indoor cinder in the Dr. County Parking Lot area, number one, Chardon Square, for the 2015 through 2017 seasons in the amount of $7,900 per year, $15,800 for the two-year period, snow plowing, and an amount not to exceed $46,284 to include salt and spring cleanup as they represent the lowest investment. The maintenance department is requesting the board award the bid to Signature Lawns and Landscaping Incorporated for the snow plowing, salt, indoor cinder in the Dr. County Parking Lot area, number two, 24-hour service area for the 2015 through 2017 seasons in the amount of $13,142 per year, $26,284 for the two-year period, snow plowing, in an amount not to exceed $46,284 to include salt and spring cleanup as they represent the lowest investment. The maintenance department is requesting the board award the bid to Eminem Home Improvements LLC for the snow plowing, salt, indoor cinder in the Dr. County Parking Lot area, number three, 470 Center Street for the 2015 through 2017 seasons in the amount of $15,600 per year, $31,200 for the two-year period, snow plowing, in an amount not to exceed $41,200 to include salt and spring cleanup as they represent the lowest investment. The maintenance department is requesting the board award the bid to Sam Landscaping for the snow plowing, salt, indoor cinder in the Dr. County Parking Lot area, number four, Safety Center for the 2015 through 2017 seasons in the amount of $15,600 per year, $31,200 for the two-year period, snow plowing, in an amount not to exceed $41,200 to include salt and spring cleanup as they represent the lowest investment. The maintenance department is requesting the board award the bid to Sam Landscaping for the snow plowing, salt, indoor cinder in the Dr. County Parking Lot area, number four, Safety Center for the 2015 through 2017 seasons in the amount of $7,475 per year, $14,950 for the two-year period, snow plowing, in an amount not to exceed $29,950 to include salt and spring cleanup as they represent the lowest investment.
Make those more.
Mr. Hager?
Hi.
Mr. Spiller?
The only one I need to abstain is from 21 because the actual plow, I dragged like personally, so.
Okay. So all the rest of them should do.
Yeah, so I on all of them, but 21, I'll just abstain just to.
Okay.
Responsible company two.
So one right by.
By Al.
Of Sam.
Yeah, okay. I'm thinking of the other guy down.
Yeah, really good. It's kind of nice to see two young guys that are really, well, three, yeah, two boys, but your father used to be a sergeant here at the highway patrol.
Oh, okay.
And Al, he was, but he's really, those kids are really good.
They've done a lot with that business.
Yeah.
I think if I remember right, they got a couple of months.
Yeah.
For a new business.
Design and stuff, they've had some good accounts.
Kind of response do we get when you advertise for bids on these snow plow contracts?
Uh, this one, I want to say there was five or six companies.
Total, total?
Yeah, total.
Total, total.
Some, some of them, some had just one or something?
Correct, correct.
Why do you suppose that is?
Because they're so cheap.
You mean that there's not more?
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, I, I dabbled in this many, many moons ago, plowing, like when my twenties and adding a lot of commercial lot or something like this. Yeah, it's a lot of work and you spend a lot of fuel plowing this lot, but it's all productive expense.
It's much more.
It's not driving between house to house to house and spending all the money on, within the time, you know, I call it windshield time where you're driving from this job to that job, you're still using fuel and you're not making money. We're here, you're, when you're here, you're pushing snow and hopefully you're making money.
In 470, we, we request that they keep a five cubic yard loader on hand at all times and so it can't be in Burton or somewhere else. It has to stay here on site.
To move the piles.
Right. And they use that for plowing. They got a push box and everything.
Now, is that the little Bobcat that I've seen you in?
No.
No, it's a nine, Cat 920, isn't it, that Paul has?
Yeah, Paul has. Um, it has to be a five cubic yard push box on site at all times with a loader to let the weight, because everything we push all snow from here all the way to the back.
So it's a five cubic yard push box, not the bucket on front of the loader?
The bucket is awesome.
It's five cubic yards?
Yes. They put an extension on it on the front of the loader, so.
It was a five cubic yard, like dirt bucket?
Right.
That'd be a big machine. That'd be breaking our new asphalt up as it went across.
So the loader they only use to move the snow piles, so they use the push box for everything. And we request that about 10 years ago. They went with somebody else where they didn't have that requested and they tried to move it with pickup trucks in here all the time and I guess it was always a problem. And then they break down and then they have problems getting somebody in there. So they said that's one of the things to learn from is make sure you have that on site at all times.
If you look at it, it's the size of a small shopping center. I mean, you go to a small shopping center, they're not using pickup trucks unless they have to, you know, for, for cleanup or something around.
We have, we have our pickup trucks and plus we have the push box for the skidster. So we usually do that during the day.
We have blower?
Yes, we have a snow blower. Uh, we use it a lot down at the 470 area, um, at the safety center, blowing the snow back, getting the piles blown back, going to dog ward and getting piles moved out. We try to get everything moved back so it makes it easier for them so they're not tearing up the grass and tearing up all kinds of stuff and losing progressions. So it was one of those things where we could go out and contract it out with that extra $10,000, it was much easier and cheaper to get a snow blower and we put one of our guys in a Thursday and they go around and clean up all the snow.
Answering my question originally, our bid specs prohibit a lot of, uh, winter, yeah, winter, winter type work, landscapers and whatnot, uh, to come in and plow because buying those big machines is a significant investment.
Just to have it sit in a lot.
Well, I don't, holy shit, it's nine months out of year.
Yeah.
Not like it's, you know, it's not like, it's not a good investment, so. Okay, thanks.
Yep. Uh, the next four is just, this one slipped through me, I shouldn't have done this a long time ago, but this is just to release the off performance fines of these snow plowing contracts from the last previous two weeks. That's all been met and we're good to go.
So, so a quick question for you on this, this has nothing to do with you really. Is this the sort of thing?
Is this the sort of thing that requires a decision or it's administrative kind of
thing? We were talking earlier about maybe getting rid of some of the administrative kinds of things off of the docket for these meetings. Would this be the sort of thing that we could do that with?
I'd have to check legally to make sure we have the, Kristen might be able to answer better than me, but I would think that you want to.
Can I say anything?
This is just in the bid, you are just awarding the bid to the lowest contractor. Contracts will be next.
Oh, I think so.
No, he's talking about the bid.
He's talking about the releasing of the bid bond, which I, I would think, they've got a bond somewhere, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they're in the fire safe.
So I actually have to be taken seriously. That could be the kind of thing, if you gave me the authority, you know, once, you know, you talk to Glenn and he, you know, gives you evidence that everything's been met, then I would just do that on behalf.
We might want to look at that. I do want to pursue that. We could, we could have simplified this considerably and it's boring for most of the people sitting out there. There's nothing exciting about it. Well, that's true, there's that harassment factor.
We do the lump sum of all of their projects at once.
Yeah.
When we do the engineer's office and that can be pretty lengthy as well, so.
Yeah, yeah. So those are good examples of something we can check the door on.
Okay, thanks.
Would you like to do a show me two from the.
Let's do it.
The maintenance department is requesting the board release the bid performance bond for Eminem Home Improvements LLC for the 2013 through 2015 snow plowing consulting of county own site group number one, Chardon Square, as all specifications have been met. The maintenance department is requesting the board release the bid performance bond for signature lawns and landscaping incorporated for the 13 through 15 snow plowing consulting of county own site group number two, 24-hour service area, as all specifications have been met. The maintenance department is requesting the board release the bid performance bond for TBS snow plowing for the 2013 through 2015 snow plowing consulting of county own site group number three, 470 Center Street, as all specifications have been met. The maintenance department is requesting the board release the bid performance bond for Eminem Home Improvements LLC for the 2013 through 2015 snow plowing consulting of county own site group number four, Safety Center, as all specifications have been met.
I'll make those motions.
Mr. Hager?
Hi.
Mr. Spiller?
Hi.
Mr. Kepel?
We'll see you at one here.
Steve, if you're here for that, the one item, it's already done.
Item's already done, it was okay, love.
Okay, just want you to sit back and report if you thought.
I'm very excited.
Morning, Jerry.
Morning, Jerry. First item on our, on the list here for Water Resources is hiring of Gail Knight to the maintenance position. It's filling the position that Keith Yew Connor vacated looking like the work for Russell Trench.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve hiring Gail Knight for position of maintenance worker number two, 330, to the effect of October 26, 2015 at a rate of $16.11 per hour with a 100-day probationary period.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Mr. Hager?
Hi.
Mr. Iler?
Hi.
Mr. Kepel?
Next item is hiring Aqua Line to do a leak detection on our Bainbridge water system and the services center water system. They actually go around and they, they have sonar equipment that they put on each man or each fire hydrant and they can hear where the water is leaking out of the system or not. What we pay for water, especially in Bainbridge, for Cleveland, the last time we had them do this, two years ago, they found two hydrants that hadn't been completely closed, so they were dripping a little bit. Basically them finding those two hydrants paid for them coming out and doing the work.
Wow, we pay Cleveland water.
Seriously? Yeah. Basically that drip over about, I think it was about 120 days, what we would have paid Cleveland water for that was.
So there's period events that drips cost you money?
Yep.
Plus the freeze in the wintertime risk, you know?
Correct, yeah. I mean, it is a big, the reason why we brought them out two years ago was we were seeing a tremendous difference between what Cleveland water was charging us or billing us for and what we were able to account for through our metering system as well as other, the other areas we know where construction, water's used for construction or where our guys use water for cleaning up the sewer lines and things like that. We've, I've been keeping track of that. I keep track of that every, every two months when we do our reads, compare that to what we, we've been billed by Cleveland water to see if we have any. We had a substantial leak then at that point, we weren't, we did, we were doing searching on our own, trying to find it, and we weren't able to find the leak and the amount of water we were seeing being lost, we're, so you gotta be able to see this water. What we come to find out when they came out and did it was, it was, the water line was leaking, but where it was leaking it was in a wetland. So we weren't seeing an area that was wet that shouldn't have been wet or.
Isn't that a dry, isn't that a buildable lot?
No, it is, I, I actually did go back about a few months after that, just received because I thought the same thing, is have we been feeding this wetland for a long time? But it. EP may not allow you to stop that leak here, you can't destroy a wetland. So we decided this year, we decided two years ago when we had them, was just bring them back out every couple of years just to, just to evaluate the system. And they find a couple little leaks, they pay for themselves, so we decided let this year to go ahead and have them do the services center area too.
Now, isn't that, that, that's on the same water line as, as the homes, right?
Yes.
And they can, they hear by the hydrant.
Yeah, it's supposed, I, I don't know all the, but.
And differentiate between the leak at the hydrant and the, between the water usage in the line next to the hydrant?
Between normal water flow and water flow coming through a leak, there's, there's a, there's a different sound that they hear. I wasn't able to get out there the last time because, but my guy who was walking with them, they showed, they let him listen to it. He's like, yeah, it's amazing, you wouldn't think it would be.
Yeah.
It's water flowing, so it sounds the same, but it definitely sounds different when it's coming out of a, when it's a leak versus the normal water flow. It's, the normal water flow has, the way it was explained, I mean, normal water flow is more of a, a deadened sound because it's constant.
Mm-hmm.
But if it's a leak, it's not necessarily constant, it's either drip or even if it's flowing out at a higher rate, it's got a different sound because it's not going out of a, it's not going out of a.
Normal valve.
A valve or a tap that is, was put in, it's going out through a crack or, you know, the little line separated and the joint.
It's interesting.
And they're actually able to, with their equipment that they have, when there is a leak, like the one that was in the wetland, they were actually able to narrow it down to about a five-foot section. So it wasn't just saying, there's a leak somewhere between these two hydrants, dig up the whole line and try to find it, it was, you know, it's misinterpreted, it's somewhere in this circle right here, so.
Do they use dye at all to?
No, it's all, find out what it's all to the sonar and through listening. They have, they have one, one set of equipment that actually listens at the hydrants and then they have another set of equipment that listens on the ground.
Hmm, interesting.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and activate the service contract agreement with Aqua Line to perform a leak detection survey of the water distribution system for Bainbridge Township and the services center for a period of three months in an amount not to exceed $4,734.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Mr. Hager?
Hi.
Mr. Spiller?
Hi. Mr. Kepel? Jerry, while you're here, I wanted to ask you a question and I wanted to ask the other commissioners too. I had a conversation with, with Dave this morning and, you know, we're saddened to hear about that incident with one of your employees there that passed away suddenly, but what I'd like to try to do with, to see if I could get some support on the board is, there's an issue with, like, the insurance that you guys were made aware of, I think. I'd like to try to see if we could pass a policy to just have the standardized that the board, for like, all the employees to be able to have this so that, you know, this isn't a, a, you know, common situation, but it's a situation where family gets put in a position where their benefits get terminated on the last day of the month and then they don't have medical benefits to go on. What I'd like to do is just try to do something where we can establish, you know, even if we have to allocate like something in a fund or just do something where we can say that we'll put a stipend in there or a policy that will automatically cover, like, you know, 90 days, you know, as part of like a, like an employee benefit or something as far as like an insurance where we basically could say, you know, there's, that the family isn't burdened with trying to scramble. In this situation, the fellow passed away on the last day of the month and at midnight he's got no benefits. But we can try to do something where we covered the Cobra policy for 90 days or six months or whatever we would be able as a board to just say, listen, you know, get your affairs in order and I'd like to try to get something so that we could move to, move something for that.
We, we talked to, he and I were talking about this yesterday and Laura came in, I think to see Skip about another issue and we, we talked about it and I'm in, I'm in agreement with you that we need to do something as, with everything that doubles in the details and so she's trying to.
Right.
Come up with some kind of a.
Yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't a straightforward procedure that was already established that we could have something ready for you, the board to look at favor. I'm hoping, there won't be a meeting next week, but hopefully by next.
There's some state law that comes to play. Now, the good news in this situation and.
She has coverage.
Is that she does have coverage and so she's not left out in the lurch, but we don't.
That's what we understand.
Yeah, we understand that she is covered.
The next, the next committee situation may be different. I mean, I'd be in support of certainly looking at anything that's illegal. We don't want to make, have an emotional situation, have us do something that isn't appropriate in the longer term, but certainly.
Certainly we need to look at it, make sure that we're operating by our place. But it's a sad situation. If she didn't have coverage, she'd be in hurts.
Really, it's the family of our employees, which in turn, I mean, our employee is unfortunately passed, but, uh, yeah, I, I, I wouldn't, when David called me last week about that, I was like, yeah. I mean, I wasn't, cause, cause many, many times, you know, your insurance coverage will carry on for another month, uh, depending on how it's, how it's written. Uh, and, and I would be in favor because all of our employees believe, I don't want to misspeak here, but I believe all of us have some form of life insurance coverage. I don't know what to pay out.
I think it's fifty thousand.
Fifty, no, well, it's fit, I'm thirty-seven-five because I'm old. Uh, when you get to sixty-five, it drops. Uh, I didn't think that was fair, but that's the way it is, you know? Uh, the, the issue being how quickly they cut that check where if they, you know, if, if you die on the fifteenth, your family has two weeks of coverage. And maybe they, by the, by the end of the month, they've received a, a, uh, insurance check, a death benefit check, which gives them some cash on hand to, to, to operate. Everybody's situation is different. But when you die on the thirtieth of the month, you got zip. And it, and, and, uh, it may take two, three weeks for whoever are, you know, is it seven?
Anthem.
Anthem is the line, right. Uh, it may take them a few weeks to process and get that, to get the money out. And I, I'm saying that at the minimum, that before somebody gets some ready cash.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that helps with it. But I think, I think you're right on target that we, we, we need to do something and it needs to, of course, be uniform for all employees, uh, which brings up the question, I don't know if it can be uniform for elected officials. Uh, I don't think we can be included in anything like that because that's additional compensation and that wouldn't, uh.
Yeah, if you drop dead tomorrow, there's no problem. It's, it's gone.
That's it.
We want to make sure the employees.
Well, there, there might be some advantages. But I think we need to, you know, move, move, yeah, move forward with it, with that, uh, through the legal channels so that we don't have.
I think we got, uh, consensus that we need to do something.
So that way, you think you're bringing it up for you, you know, it's, that way we don't have to, you know, deal with that issue and try to, you know, make concessions last minute and stuff. So if we can do that.
I, yeah, I think we're all in agreement, as Skip said, and, uh, like I said, it's the devil in the details. Get it through legal and find out, uh, in the benefits area.
And David and I had multiple conversations, even if there was any way, I mean, it's goofy the way the law's written because I was suggesting maybe we just make the COVER payment.
Right.
And just take a fund and just give her money and say, this is for your COVER payment. But apparently that's a benefit. We're not allowed to do that because it's not uniform and there's legal issues with it. You know, we were throwing all kinds of options, so.
Well, we, we didn't have a lot of time, so I, I think in the next week or so, we'll come up with something.
Yeah, what's it been, seven days?
Not even that. It was last, uh, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
And his position was in maintenance?
He was a maintenance position, but he was actually working with our electrician to be, to replace our electrician when he decided to retire. So it was actually, actually, when I was sitting in session last Tuesday, I was kind of putting together a list of things I wanted to do that week and one of the things on there was to do the advertisement for the electrician, pull him in, to make him an electrician. He's been doing the work for three years.
Was he driving or even?
No, he, he.
He was the passenger in the vehicle and the, and the driver.
With our other electrician.
And Mike's not leaving, is he?
He's able to leave anytime he wants.
Right.
So it was, the whole thought was getting somebody ready to go into that position, so. But then Keith was one that I was looking to be the future of, of the maintenance department to be.
And is he a certified, uh, does he have a license too? Not electrical, but the water.
Yes, yeah.
He's got sanitation license.
Yes.
Yeah.
But yeah, so he, he was the one that I was looking as being a, you know, somebody who could go in the maintenance supervisor position or the service manager position in the future.
Yeah, it's unbelievable how life changes that, that fast, you know, like that.
Another consideration of having a policy is because if you want to bring up a, a specific instance, then you compromise the confidentiality of the, with the family, the issue, the requirement, whatever, whatever nonsense there is that, besides good taste, that you're not broadcasting, uh, that, uh, John or Jane Doe died this afternoon or something like that. So with a, a uniform policy, it just happens. It just is enacted without, um, compromising anybody's privacy. Uh, so, so I think that is, is real, that's a real important aspect to having something that, when this happens automatically, this is available. And.
It's done.
Yeah, I, I, I just, because it's tragic enough, uh, that you don't need to be verging on something else.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jerry.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve the third amendment to the two thousand and fifteen double schedule that includes the moving the corner of the eight thirty clock. Pretty good.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Mr. Rier?
Aye.
Mr. Phil?
Aye.
Mr. Phil? Commissioner's office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing details of security arrangements pursuant to ORC one twenty-one point twenty-two ninety-six.
Make the motion.
Second. Mr. Rier?
Aye.
Mr. Phil? Mr. Phil?
Will there be action when we come back?
I, I don't believe there will be. I don't think there will be.
You?
Uh, there may be. Yeah. We'll just have to say that.
Steve, thanks for coming in today.
Yep.
Just the four before.
Yeah, we, we turned it down, by the way.
I would apologize. I tried to get here and gotten, uh, stuck in traffic, so.
Yeah, no big deal.
It was on the office.
That's what they all say.
Yesterday, I didn't know if we're going to be on the agenda, so I wanted to say, I take it serious, so I wanted to apologize for that.
No, we know. No, no, big problem. Everything going okay?
They move faster too, so.
I was trying to say, we'll make it go.
How's things going with your, um, with your Metz and Bam? Um, love you, everything going all right with that?
So far, we've been trying to do some presentations, you know, more of just letting people know what we are. You know, everyone kind of equates us, um, as a school. So we're trying to get out that information that, you know, we, we do the whole thing from zero to, to retirement age. So it's been good and it's been positive, you know? We're trying to get to all the council meetings and all the meetings we can. So, uh, so far it's been positive. We've got a good message and hopefully, you know, I think we've been fiscally responsible. Uh, plus doing the stuff that we have shared services, things like that, seems to be striking it forward to people. So so far it's going good. And hopefully, you know, so.